One of those nights. So tonight, I think we're going to try the mayor using a microphone. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular business meeting for Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 PM. I'm going to ask that Clerk Wykoff, please call the wall. Thank you, and please let the record show that Councilmember Fisher is not here right now. We do not recall that he had identified himself as being absent at this meeting. So for right now, we will just go ahead and proceed with the meeting, and we'll announce when he comes into the meeting for the record. With all that said, we're going to go ahead and move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask that Councilmember Beaumont, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comments. I'm going to go ahead and turn to the audience. Is there anybody here that is going to make public comments? This would be where you're talking, but not during the public presentation. Okay, looks good, and nobody signed in, correct? All right, we're going to go ahead now and move on to item number five. This is announcements and presentations, the 2024 State of the Hospital with Lisa LaPlante. Good evening. Yeah. Yeah, we'll just go ahead and turn on the microphone right there. Or lectern, I should probably figure out what that is. The standy thing. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, just a reminder, we are the local hospital district. So we actually are showing you that our district is actually the city of Monroe. The home is all the way. I'm a very large district. That local district, so that is the whole Monroe. We are the state of the hospital, never mind that there are other states. How many five and a quarter? They can end it maybe. But like to be, I'm worried they're doing some work six years. I don't know. You're the one who started. I'm part of. They represent. Who might be able to be that, wouldn't that? But if my friend comes out, I'll help him. It's not served. I know we may not have something to get back. I'm quite new kind of now, but be sure that it's possible to move this thing to the future. Let me shut up. And better back.
Is it power on? Can you just test it? Very, thank you.
The day-to-day operations of the hospital, you see, might be here, but we also have our chief medical officer, Dr. Dean Cade, Anne Peterson, our financial officer, and both our directors in human resources and the foundation board with spacing. Like, next slide. So this is an advertisement you actually see out in the community. You may see it on some buses or at the local movie theater. Really important for us to stress that we are, we are your community hospital. So we serve not only Monroe, we serve Soho, Sultan, Starlight, Gold Bar, Bering, and Index. And so looking at that, we have a very big hospital district, but we are representing here in Monroe. And what we're trying to do is expand our services every day, trying to keep our patients local wherever appropriate. And so that means bringing more specialists, more providers out here so you don't have to travel down two. You don't have to travel down 522 to go get that care, whether it's in person or we're even looking at virtual options down the future. Whatever makes sense to keep patients local where appropriate. Next slide.
Tempt the silence.
All right, I'm going to turn this over to Megan's for some of our broken access.
Yeah, thank you. So just to piggyback off a little bit more of what Lisa was saying, you know, we provide those critical access medical services to our patients that live out here. We think about the fact that we're a trauma-designated hospital, right? And there's not another trauma-designated hospital until you get to a NACI. And so when we think about, Lisa was talking about the size of our district, our catchment area, there really are critical services, medical services that we provide to this community. And something we're really proud about, that we've been really striving to and working hard on, is how do we continue to meet the needs of our community in a really thoughtful way? What is it as our community continues to grow? We all know that health and development is continuing to go up. Young families don't move in here. How do we meet those needs in a very thoughtful way to provide those services? So we want to talk about broken access. A few really exciting things that have been going on over the past year. Actually, this was just in July. We brought in new IV infusion pumps across the entire hospital. That rollout was in July. We standardized with our Kirkland Hospital, so that was really exciting. These new IV pumps offer better medication bar rails, some new safety mechanisms. So we're really excited to bring that new technology in. To talk a little bit more about our emergency department, we have 14 beds in that emergency department. We are a level four trauma, as I was mentioning about trauma. We see a lot of trauma patients living out here in Monroe. I think you all know, a lot of people come out directly, right? And where we're located on this highway to Orinor, a lot of folks come out this way. So not only local needs, but also those that are coming out here, visitors. We have a lot of out-of-towners as well, and we meet those needs. So we've been increasing volume year over year, and you can see on the graph, the first column there on the right does show 2024, that's annualized. We anticipate volume being at about 19,500 visits at the end of this year. And you can see that trajectory as we continue to grow. So we're looking at ways that we continue to increase our capacity in our emergency department and serve our ever-growing patient population out here. And then we get a refresh in October of 2023, really working hard to update the space that we do have and make sure that it is continuing to not only be updated with medical equipment and supplies, but just the floors, paint, right? And keeping updated with those things. And so we did that in 2023, and we've seen some, like, great patient experience success with doing that. Our urgent care location here in Monroe, that started in April of 2022, it has been, as you can see on this graph, look at that trend line, right? That trajectory of growth. It's been one of the fastest-growing locations that we've started in the Evergreen Health system. That tells us that there is clearly a need in this community to serve, you know, that not necessarily emergency care, but that urgent care population, those that can't get into their primary care providers right away, that care that is urgent and needed in a quick timeframe. And we've gotten excellent patient experience scores from our urgent care. So if any of you had to use those services, we're really proud of that. And that has also led to more volume in our emergency department. We are able to see those patients here and then quickly determine if they need a higher level of care and get them over to the hospital, which is just across the front lawn. So it's been a really wonderful partnership. And we've seen really just strong efficiencies for that clinic. And then I do want to touch upon our surgery department. So in May of last year, we brought on our Mako robot, which, for those that do not know, a Mako...
Robot in Monroe.
A robot. In our Monroe Hospital. We didn't know, yeah, that would actually happen out here in our hospitals. So we're really, really proud of that. And our Mako robot is a type of robot that helps with elective total joint procedures. So when you think about total knees, total hips, and this is a big deal. This is really cutting-edge kind of surgery. We see quicker recovery times, better outcomes for patients. So we're really proud of this. We've really increased our orthopedic services here in Monroe in the last year and a half, two years. And those volumes are increasing. So really proud of our team that we've built here and have that level of care in Monroe. You don't have to travel for that. Next slide, please. So to talk a little bit more, you know, none of this really would be possible for us without our partnership with our Evergreen Health Medical Group through our Kirkland campus. That medical group is helping to provide our increased specialty services, and they're a fantastic group of writers. And so we're very fortunate, they're also passionate about this community, and the folks that we've been able to recruit to come out to Monroe quickly see the need, and they fall in love with this community. So we started with our cardiology clinic in October of 2023. We have two cardiologists that come out, Dr. Tabalera and Dr. Gonzalez, and they are all about preventative cardiac medicine. And then those clinics quickly filled, and again, you can see the trajectory there, how we have increased our volume basically month over month, with little dips here and there for vacations and things. We do have them on vacation every now and then, sometimes. But they've been very, very busy, and clearly, again, there's been a need in our community for the specialty care. So we're really proud of how quickly that clinic has, has grown and the way we've been able to serve the needs. We're looking at some other options now, expanding our diagnostic imaging, cardiology services, so stress testing. We're actively working on cardiac CT services that all combines to provide those wraparound cardiac services for care. So really excited about that. Happy to announce that in September, so this month, a little later this month, ear, nose, and throat is also being added to that specialty, multi-specialty clinic on the second floor of our hospital. So not only will we be seeing patients in and outpatient perspective in the clinic, but providing surgical care as well. So ear tubes, tonsillectomies, things like that, where we haven't been providing those services here in our Monroe campus previously. So really looking forward to that partnership. We're expanding with gastroenterology and doing more screening colonoscopies. We have two GI providers that are onboarding in the next couple of months, and so we'll be quickly ramping up those services as well. For those that may not know, there's a huge need in our community for screening colonoscopies. There was a need already going into COVID, and then when a lot of those elective procedures shut down, a huge backlog occurred. And so we're still trying to work through that backlog of getting through screening elective colonoscopies. So we're really working to meet the need of our community in that way as well. Excited to announce we have a second general surgeon that is joining our team as well in January of 2025, and so that will expand our surgical capabilities as well. So a lot of growth in our procedural areas and surgeries. And then diagnostic imaging, we have to support all of this wraparound care with those tests and diagnostic imaging. Our volumes across those modalities continue to increase. So we're talking about CT, MRI, ultrasound, mammography, and we continue to look at ways to create redundancy. Specifically, we're looking at our CT services right now. How do we potentially, in a second CT machine, to support our trauma patients, our stroke patients, things like that, when they're coming through our emergency department? Next slide, please.
Yeah, Lisa, come ahead. So with, with all the growth that we've seen and continued, actually, market share shift that we've seen to Evergreen Health and Evergreen Health Monroe, we have been fortunate enough the past couple of years since COVID to be one of the very few hospitals in the state of Washington with a positive bottom line. And it's the first time a hospital here has had a positive bottom line. So it's really exciting. It just shows that with growth, we're able to bring in a lot more services and really be able to provide that care to our community. So this just shows the month end, July 2024, our net operating income, we were five point site, five point, five point six million year-to-date ahead of budget. And net income, nine point nine million ahead of budget. Days cash on hand. So what that means for the organization is if we stop receiving any revenue from payers, how long can we exist and continue to provide patient care? Right now, when I started in 2010 in the organization, we may have been at one or two days cash on hand, and that was, if we're lucky, because we were holding checks. It was a bad time back then. We are now at 124, we're actually far beyond that and proceed to be beyond that into the future financially because of the affiliation with Kirkland and being able to systemize a lot of the support services and things like that, we'd be able to be more efficient. We pay the same pay as all the other hospitals, we're in huge a sound, and that's a big thing for Monroe. We've never been able to do that before. We've done between 10 to 20 to 25% raise increases in the past year, $2.3 million in increases, but it's showing that our staff are here, they're here to serve. For the first time ever in this past year, we didn't have any open nursing vacancies. Didn't last long because we have grown, so that's a good thing. But the hospital is really doing well. So the first time in 64th history of being a public hospital district here, we achieved a positive bottom line solely on our operating revenue. So that means support any levy dollars. So that means we can invest for massive capital back into the organization, pay our staff with the levy dollars that we do get, and continue to grow. And so it's a really great place for the organization to be. We're in a difficult position because we need a lot more space than we have now. We need a lot more patient care space right now. Every day, we're returning for our patients in the ED hallway because we are so busy. We might come seeing an average of 22 patients a day during COVID. Now our average is 50.
Maybe 60.
55 to 60. And so, and our staff are handling it exceptionally well, but we don't have the space for it. So we are looking, we're in master facility planning right now. We're in a pre-design process to look for additional patient care space, including ED, W R ORs, our inpatient beds, imaging, things like that. We have to prepare now for the future growth of our community, and this is a 10- to 15-year plan. So we're just in the beginning phases of that, but the support we're seeing and the shift of our community and beyond is huge. So I'm just very proud to be a part of the team that we have at the hospital here, be a part of the system of Evergreen Health. We could not do that, all of this, without them, and I think we have a lot more potential in the future. So, next slide.
All right, so we want to wrap up with, if this wasn't feel-good enough, we think it's pretty feel-good, but we want to wrap up with a really feel-good story, which is to talk a little bit more about the opportunity we had with the partnership of City of Monroe and our ARPA funding with our recovery center. So for folks that may not know, our recovery center is for substance use disorder patients, and we have an acute detox side of the facility as well as a residential side of the facility. And so we've been honored to receive several rounds of that funding, which is dedicated to substance use recovery for locally uninsured patients. And many of those come through the embedded social worker program, and that's where those referrals typically come through from this scholarship program. So it's really about, you know, seeing a need within the community through interactions when they're out on site and saying, hey, we can help you. Let's get you to a place that can really support you in your recovery when folks are ready to do that. And so there are population concerns, right? These folks are coming with, often they're very basic of needs not being met, and so trying to go through a time of recovery can be very challenging. So one of the first things is just meeting those basic needs, right? How do we do that to make sure that we can move through the phases of recovery for folks? And so in addition to providing that structure, education, support, we also have to think about how do we make sure they feel safe, right? They're secure, they've got food, they're warm, right? Holding all those kinds of things. And so that's part of this program, and we're so proud to be a partner with the City of Monroe for this scholarship. Next slide, please. So lastly, I do want to talk about one of our success stories. This is a 35-year-old female who was a scholarship recipient that was able to come through our recovery center, who was dealing with both fentanyl and heroin addiction and was in need of support and services. And so she was also treated for co-occurring, what we call co-occurring, when there's also behavioral health or mental health component, anxiety and depression. And that's very, very often the case. Substance use and mental health disorders can often be very interwoven with each other. And so during her stay with us, staff recognized that she needed multiple medical touchpoints, and so they were able to help facilitate those things. At one point, she needed to go to the ER for something acute. They also had her to the dentist. I mean, some of these routine things that her care, that she had not been able to seek otherwise. They also really helped her set up court appointments and follow-through on that end. And then ultimately, she was able to go completely through the program successfully and enter the long-term treatment facility, and then at the end of that was able to reunite with her family. So this was one that I know. Our team over there, it's not always successful, right? We see patients that come back time and time again, and we're there every time to greet them and hope that this time will be the time we're successful. When we have someone that goes through treatment and moves on in this kind of way, it provides such hope for our team as well for the work that they do, and it's still validating for the work that we do for Recovery Center. So again, we're very thankful for that opportunity and the partnership with the city. And with that, we can go ahead and move to the next slide, and please, I am happy to entertain any questions that anyone might come.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Thank you very much, Kevin. For the record, I'm going to announce, hi, Kyle. The Councilmember Fisher, he arrived at Brookley 705, or so, as long as he came here. So thank you. And Attorney Counsel, any questions? Good. I was going to call you Councilmember Campbell, because your name is Jeremiah Campbell, who's the Vice President. We'll go with the answer, I'm going to go with the white side.
Vice President works fine. Oh, there you go. No, I'm going to come with a raise. I appreciate your report. I appreciate the good news story at the end. I appreciate you coming and thanking the city for the ARPA funds, because we don't get a lot of that. So that means a lot to me. I utilize your urgent care and have a great experience there. Have utilized your facilities multiple times with my large family. And most recently, when I was with my wife and I were visiting a family member there, we went, we got paused in to see that family member, Bertford, and the nurse at the station recognized us, and we recognized her, I think in the county, and she helps with the birth of our 27 and 25-year-old kids.
Our only nurse, yes.
There at Valley General. And so that was really cool, to see her and talk to her for a bit, and she was just as sweet as ever. And so I'm hoping that, I don't have a plan to have any more kids. But I'm hoping that for families that are planning to do that, that that's in your future because it was very convenient, and you talk about the community and all that. It would be very nice to have that opportunity for young families that are looking at. So I'm hoping, maybe, yes, that's something on the horizon, but.
And we'll share that with Kenny if that's okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Walker.
Thank you guys for coming and presenting. I'm ready to run through a wall of those numbers that you were showing. That's amazing, it's so exciting. And I just, I was thinking about how lucky we really are as a community to have you guys so close. I had an experience with my son, he was like 13 months, 14 months old at the time, where I went and checked on him in the night, and he was having some trouble breathing. We live in the Freeland, and it was one of those emergency situations, 30-second drive to the hospital. And I think we were in a room with a team helping us within, I don't know, maybe 10 minutes of arriving, maybe less, five minutes. It was an incredible experience. The care was amazing, it was reassuring, and I had this feeling a lot better. It was just, it was one of those moments where I was just like, I can't believe we have this right in Monroe. And in a situation like that, to think of a family in Sultan or up on Ingram Road or Florence Acres having a similar situation, that's 40 minutes to Kirkland or 10 minutes to Monroe. So, so grateful for all the work that all of your nurses and doctors and staff have all come to do there, and thank you for the incredible stewardship, clearly. Grateful for you guys.
Thank you. Appreciate that. There's so many, so many people in our district that know the travel that we have to take to get anywhere up to 522 and other places. We're just like, come here, or you can get the services here. That's a long travel, and it depends on the day, and it depends, like, if it's a Sunday in the summer, you've been on a travel a long time. So that's why we want to keep everything we can, that's appropriate right here, right? There's not anything we're going to be able to do here, but the sky's the limit, I feel. Thank you for that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell.
No, I really appreciate the report. For some of us, we've heard any of these reports, and we've been through times where we didn't know if we were going to have this accident. There's been a lot of work across, you know, the board of the community. And it's just so, you know, maybe where feel-good it is, that's feel-good, and it's great. And I look at the numbers like this, and to hear that says screams future to me. And, you know, how do we build on it? I'm with Kevin, I'm really glad you brought that up. That is something for young families that would be great for the community. But yeah, I just can't thank you guys enough. Extremely encouraged, so far, come a long way from the reports of 2010. It's a long, that's a long way from there. So just thanks, do a great work. Say hi to Sam, one.
So just for me, I, you know, one of the things when you're campaigning, when you're going to Monroe, you get to realize how much there is as you get to go along. And I don't know that people really quite grasp the fact, you know, you've got the school district, and there are people, the mayor and the council are in charge of the school district. At least they know there's a school district in the city, but yours, and they know about fire district, but people don't think about the hospital district. And having a public hospital district here is so important for not just people having kids, but also for seniors. Well, I, me too, but I mean, seniors also. So I, I know that I have learned over the last few years especially about how you have sort of areas of our nation that are running hospitals. You'd be driving a couple hours to a hospital, and a lot of those are rural areas. So you serve an extremely important function here, providing services only down highway to an addition here in Monroe. And I know that in addition to trails and parks, housing affordability, transportation, it was having a hospital here that helped us make this a good choice for where we decided to live back in 2000. And I just want to express how much I appreciate it here, here. And then to the councilmembers, just when you can, talk to folks about what a hospital district is, because it's part of our civics you never learned about in school. And yeah, you don't want to find yourself in a situation where we're not properly funding it and we don't come here. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda this evening, and that agenda. Early morning, I probably need some water. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Look, Attorney Counsel. Insert chapter music here. Okay, go ahead, Councilman Walker.
The move to approve the consent agenda is provided in the package.
Second, culture.
Yeah, motion for Councilmember Walker, a second for Councilmember Culture to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Say none, I'll call for the, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All of those, motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We're going to move to the one I remember best, item 7.1, which is Emergency Housing Fund, EHF, Washington State Conference, Conference Motel Voucher Program Contracts with St. Louis County and the American Department.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Monroe City Councilmembers. This item is coming back to you today for further consideration on the emergency motel voucher contract. At our last meeting, there was a request for clarification around... At our last meeting, there was a request for clarification around the coordinated entry requirement. I was able to connect with our county partners, and they clarified that the wording in the contract is intended not to eliminate the coordinated entry requirement, but just to designate who, who is allowed to fill out that assessment with the clients. So it is making it so that the people who are working under this contract are not responsible for filling out the coordinated entry assessment with the clients. They will be referring them to 211, like everybody else would have to go through 211 and do the coordinated entry assessment through 211. So if there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer. And we do also have Susan Italy joining us in the audience. If the council members have any questions on the county contract that she might be able to answer that I might not be able to.
Right, thank you. May I ask, do you have any bring Susan Price? First, forward. Just in case there are questions, we'll make it a little bit. Good evening, Susan, how are you?
Hello, thank you for having me.
Thank you for joining us. So we're going to go ahead and move to the council now, see if there are any questions. And I will acknowledge, I'll go ahead and acknowledge Ms. Adams, and if she indicates that you'd be better to respond, I'll go ahead and ask you to answer the question. Does that sound good?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. So Attorney Counsel, are there any questions? Do you consider a question action with your consideration? Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
Thank you for the clarification between the last version and this. What, what observation during the last round led to the change of the program to Monroe residents only?
I believe that we wanted to narrow the focus and target an impact on Monroe. So these funds are being administered by the city of Monroe with the intent for the city of Monroe to see the benefit and the direct impact. So I think that's part of it. I think it's also to make the contract more manageable for our agents through DOA, just to not have to displace anyone from their area of residence.
Thank you. And then with regard to that question, the residency question, I could be wrong, but I think somewhere in the fact that I saw there being a restriction that the person cannot, location of residence or prior residence can't be used to qualify for the program. I could be wrong on that, but my question is, how is residency established? Because my worry is that if this, if there were people from outside of Monroe who were still using the program and were then getting vouchers to stay in Monroe, that, that is sort of my concern. In other words, do we limit the lodging to Monroe, but still be willing to take in those who need vouchers from outside of the city?
Yeah, so typically, the way we establish residency for our homeless is to have our service providers provide letters verifying their homelessness status as to our law enforcement. And then the social worker does that pretty regularly. And so does, so do most of our social workers and navigators, community workers that we're using. Yeah, so they'll be, they'll have developed that relationship with their clients and be able to vouch for them being from Monroe.
I spoke with a gentleman who had benefited from this program, and he explained to me the impact that it had on his situation. And he said that he slept in the cold when he didn't have it. So I appreciate it. I think it's a really good option for us to have. I'll be supporting it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or a motion from the council? Councilmember Campbell.
No, I appreciate the clarification. That was brought for a lot of us. And I think the only, and you know, for me, it resolves my concerns, because we had a presentation, I was first going to explain coordinated entry program, all that. I guess is, the only question I had was, so is this just to, why wasn't it a problem before? I guess is what I'm saying. Is that something that they just, we just didn't want to cross, to be in that? Or we didn't want somebody putting them into the program or to do the coordinated entry as the person that's doing the grant? Or is it the DOA that would be doing that? I guess why didn't we take the language out then? If they're still going through a coordinated entry program, why wasn't it a problem before?
I think I would turn to Susan for that clarification.
Susan, go ahead.
Thank you. This was really just a correction of the language. We have contracts that run for all of our emergency shelter programs that have this language. It had been many years ago that our emergency shelters used to actually do the coordinated entry assessment. We've stopped that practice. And so as we were updating this contract, we were just correcting the language. It actually really shouldn't have been in there last time. And it was never the intent that this contract would actually have staff that complete the coordinated entry assessment. That's only done by agencies that are specifically contracted to do that work. They're specifically trained. And the reason we've narrowed it down in that way is, one, to allow emergency shelters to focus on what they're doing best. Motels are a form of emergency shelter. And also allows us to focus on having really skilled and trained navigators that do the work of the assessment, so that all clients are assured equal access by having the assessment done consistently. So we have a pretty narrow group of people that are contracted to do the work of doing the assessment. That's our navigation work, and that's a separate contract from this one. So really, it was just a language cleanup. Unfortunately, it probably added some confusion. I do apologize for that.
Oh, I'll get, actually, that explanation makes complete sense, and I, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions from the counselor or motion? There's a requested action, so the councilor, go on.
I move to approve the Emergency Housing Fund, Washington State Department of Commerce Motel Voucher Program Contracts with Stonewash County, Contract 2024-81, and the Volunteers of America Western Washington, Contract 2024-082.
Second. A motion from Councilmember Beaumont, and second from Councilmember Campbell for the requested action. Under unfinished business item 7.1, as shown on the screen, any discussion on the motion? Say none, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes six one, with Councilmember Fisher voting against. All right, thank you very much. Did I get that vote count right? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Susan, thank you very much for coming this evening to, so we could ask questions. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So they appreciate it as well. So thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda then is new to the side of number eight point one, award change of scope request, St. Vincent de Paul Housing with Wraparound Services, again with Ms. Adams, as Ms. Adams shows.
It really is. So this item is a change of scope request to reallocate some funds from the Heather's Hope Line item, the Flex Funds Line item, and the Administration Line item into Hotel Room Line items, so that St. Vincent de Paul can continue providing hotel nights. Hoteling is a very expensive program, so this would benefit being able to continue those hotel nights. The Case Management Services, which is part of the Wraparound Services component of this program, remains untouched, so that will continue as a part of the program also. And I'm happy to ask any questions.
All right, thank you. Attorney Counsel, any questions or a motion? Councilmember Walker.
I move to approve the change of scope request from St. Vincent de Paul to reallocate the agency's 2023-2024 General Fund Award toward providing more hotel room nights.
Hanford, second. A motion from Councilmember Walker, a second from Councilmember Hanford for the requested action, as shown on the screen, as item number eight point one, any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
I just wanted to give a shout out to Roger Evans and Don Al, because I had the opportunity to talk to a lot of our individuals in Monroe that, again, are benefiting from this program. And what becomes very clear is that Roger and Don Al are invaluable for our community in making these programs. They're just, they're such boots on the ground, so I just wanted to give them some sort of appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other discussion on the motion? Say none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Rachel's Business, number eight point two. This is opioid, opioid, there we go.
Hard word to say.
Opioid settlement funding allocation to the Scholarship Fund Program, with Ms. Adams.
All right, so this item is an opportunity to approve allocating $30,000 of opioid settlement funding into the Scholarship Fund Program, which I was delighted to have Evergreen Health here to present some success stories from that program earlier. We have funded them, as you heard, with our funds as part of the pilot project. It's been very successful. And there are some success stories also attached to your agenda items tonight. And we, as the Community Human Resources Advisory Board, considers how they would like to recommend allocating these limited use funding sources. They wanted to continue funding the Scholarship Fund Program, which is currently out of funding. So this would allow for funding through the end of the year by extending the contract.
Thank you very much. Attorney Counsel, for questions or a motion? Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you, Rachel. I think that this is a wonderful use of $30,000 in opioid settlement funds. And obviously, it was great timing to have this presentation tonight. So I would like to move to approve allocating $30,000 in opioid settlement funds to support ongoing funding for the Scholarship Fund Program at the Evergreen Health Community Center.
Hanford, second. Yeah, a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, and I heard vote entered in Scarborough. That's the first time I've, I've been to Scarborough this evening. It's the first time I've heard you this evening, I think. So I'm going to go ahead, motion seconded by Councilmember Scarborough. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, before we move forward with the vote, I am just going to simply express how much I appreciate that we're doing this. I don't know if you all remember, but about a year or two ago, when there was discussion about opioid dollars coming in. First, it's something that I kind of opposed, well, I opposed, because I don't like letting people off, you know, like these businesses getting let off for what they've done to the United States. So that bothers me. With that said, I think what we're doing with money is the right thing to do. About a year or two ago, I remember going into a meeting with Stonewash County. We were talking about trying to get all of us to pay into a sort of a regional approach. And I explained to them that Monroe's doing what's right for Monroe, and we wanted to keep the funds that we have rather than participate regionally, and have the money to operate, give into some fund about education and flyers and stuff like that. To me, this is the right thing. We're actually positively impacting people's lives. We even had, as of, I think it was last, I think it was two years ago now, King Five cannot did something about the Senate. And I, this is the right thing to do with it. So while I am not in favor of settlement on this issue, and I'd rather see them in jail, I think that what we're doing here is the right thing. So that makes me feel angry on one side for settlement, but good on the other side for doing what's right with the money. So thank you everybody. With all that, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero, because of the record show that Councilmember Culture was not in the room. Thank you. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Rachel.
We're going to go ahead and move on to the council report. So I'm going to start with a vote, folks. Councilmember Fisher, you're up first.
Hey, what's going on? Sorry, I couldn't be there tonight. You guys hear me okay?
Yes, good.
I don't really have a whole lot. I just thought I would bring up again, since we had the dispensary conversations. And I was one that was opposed to them. Just if anybody's been watching the news, one of the reasons why I was opposed to it, because there is a cannabis shop, hashtag cannabis in Redmond, that has been hit five times this year. It just got hit again two days ago. And another one in Seattle also had a stolen car, ran into it, and was robbed at gunpoint. So I did a quick little interview with Everett Herald, and my stance on it was just the safety for our community. So I just thought I'd bring it back up again, just to kind of keep it on people's minds, because it's going to come up again for us here before too long. Other than that, that is everything.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher. Councilmember Walker.
I was able to catch the first hour of the Stonewash County tomorrow Steering Committee meeting before the Blueberry Park ribbon cutting. Saw an interesting presentation about road usage charges, rucks, as the likely replacement for fuel taxes in Washington. It was a presentation on a study that the state did and the results that came from it. It sounds like it's not a if, but a when. It's implemented in Washington. It sounded like in the next five years. In terms of its effect on Monroe, it sounded like. About the restrictions that will be placed on its expansion of charges over the years, a mileage-based charge with so far different ways for people to opt in. What was being studied, really interesting something for us to continue to watch in case it's an item that we want to talk with our legislators about, especially as it relates to traffic. Anyways, yeah, I just wanted to bring that to your guys' attention. Blueberry Park is fantastic. The community has just been in love with it, from what I've seen by driving by. So thanks for all, thanks all who made that come together. Yeah, so I have, thank you very much, Councilmember Culture.
Very tricky mayor. All right. Chamber Luncheon today went very well.
Patrick Doherty did a very good job of talking about the financial, I mean, the economic vitality of our wonderful town. And I just enjoyed his viewpoint, and also how much experience he has that is varied. It's just beyond economic development. Striping around town, amazing, looks so good. All the streets and the, you know, the curbs and all that kind of stuff, looks just amazing.
A lot of good appeal there with the curbs?
A lot of appeal on the curbs.
Curb appeal, okay.
Exactly, sir.
I tried, it's been a long day.
I did get a chance to, I'm working concessions at one of the movies at the park, and that's a fun thing. Also, who knew that we have a big, you know, puffy movie theater thing? That's kind of cool. And so that was fun. The Community Transit Board meeting the other day was, you know, eventful as usual, but, you know, I was there. And just appreciating how beautiful our hometown is this time of year, and that is about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you, Mayor. Gosh, let's see. School is back in session, and we have the sidewalk finished, all down 179th, the Park Place Middle School, which is lovely to see. It is done on time, and so kids are able to walk safely down that street, which is wonderful progress from last year. And we have new crosswalks going in. I've been hearing from a lot of happy people about that, that we are improving pedestrian safety. And so that's been a really nice thing to see. Belonging was Saturday, I attended that, and attended the Chamber Luncheon today with council members Walker and Culture. And I have a shameless plug for the Monroe Historical Society. September 28th, we have Bingo at the Senior Center. And I talked about this at the chamber, I'm going to talk about it again. The Monroe Historical Society is a nonprofit, community-based organization that does a lot for our community. Anybody needs historic photos for their business, oh, we're having a 1967 class reunion. We are here, all volunteer-run, to support the community. We are here, all volunteer run, to support the community, and we really do support the community since nineteen seventy six. So this is a way to raise money, to keep our museum free. It's Wednesday, Saturday, noon to three, always been free, open to everybody. We'd like to keep it that way. We'd like to continue to bring kids in for school tours for free, and this is a way for us to do that. So I have posters here. If anyone would like to put them up anywhere, Deborah graciously offered to put one up at the city. Heather and Jake also offered, and I really appreciate the support. Maybe the mayor might put it in his newsletter. But would love to see everybody there. Bingo's Fund is at the senior center. If you've ever been to a senior center bingo event, it's a blast. So that's my shameless plug. Please support us. We support the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, mayor. I don't know how to follow that up. I don't have any shameless plugs.
You could sing a song.
Yeah. I was at the Blueberry Park ribbon cutting, and that was so amazing to see. It's just beautiful. The parade was fantastic this year despite the rain. I was really blown away by the number of families and people still lying on the sidewalks, kids ready for candy. And it was really, really cool. The striping looks great, like you said, the flashing crosswalks, very excited for, talked about those for years. And I just wanted to ask if there's an update on the, we talked about it at one point, but the administrator from Monroe Christian School had come and asked about getting permission with some kind of a zoning misunderstanding or something where they can't use the church building that's the house part of the church property there next door. So.
We'll get some information to the council.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you. You're welcome. Councilmember Campbell?
No report.
Thank you, councilmember Davis. Councilmember Scarborough?
I too was at the ribbon cutting at the park, and it's, it's nice to see our money and things that help the community and, and the community using it. I did want to ask councilman Beaumont about the moving of the two houses. She had brought up that there might be some progress on getting those two old houses over by over by the railroad tracks tractor, the tractor place over there. So if there's anything, I'd like to know about that. Otherwise, it's just good to be alive. Thank you.
If staff has any information about that, they'll share it with you. Otherwise, I know that councilmember Beaumont will be available after the exec session. Probably fill you in. All right, we're gonna go ahead and go to, thank you very much, councilmembers. I'm gonna go ahead and move to staff, and that would be Parks Department update with, with Ben. I'm like, you're not Farrell.
He's online.
Hi, Mike. I know you're waving. At least I'm gonna hope that you are. Go ahead.
So wrapped up a really big month. I know that the Blueberry playground is gonna talk about part of it. That was a huge success. I know Park Staff got a lot of credit, and I mentioned to a few of you, but I wanted everyone to know what a pivotal role Mattie Bush, he's our C. Mayor, Gen. Heron, our public board, he played in this. And so he, the storm work project, he inherited when he came onboard, but also that transition into the parks. And so he was a big, big part of that project, sort of played in that part. And so I just wanted to bring him to the forefront of this. But, but unfortunately, we're trying to do two parks this year. We're trying to do Blueberry and Curry. Curry's gonna have to live those springs. We're just running out of window. That squishy stuff that you walked on, the board in place, it takes a certain temperature and no rain for a week and a half. And so we're just running out of window, because by the time they get the playground installed, it's. So that'll be special for the first, first park spring. Not to mention all the events that we had. We got some feedback from our Lake High Tribe. I think even at the department board, there's a, I know from the event, so that went really well. I know it's.
Crime.
And, and Prue's just been doing a great job of wrapping things up. Start taking care of leaves. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Parks? All right. As I mentioned to Mike last week in our monthly meeting, I just really appreciate all the work the Parks Department's been doing this summer. Everything's been looking great. All of the events went really well, and just please thank your staff for us, for all the work they've done and everything. Thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and go down to item number eleven, City Administrator Report Extended Agenda. Administrator Knight?
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. Looking at the extended agenda going forward into rest of September, we will be canceling the Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting on the seventeenth. And then we have just a couple of items scheduled for the regular study session, and that includes coming back to the council with additional information about the law enforcement embedded social worker program. So that's the only item that we have on the agenda at this moment, but I'm sure it will be filling up over the next couple of days. And looking forward to the twenty fourth, we are tentatively scheduling our Transportation Benefit District Public Hearing for the TBD budget. So we will be potentially starting that meeting at six P M. And all the members of the council are members of the Transportation Benefit District Board. And we'll be sending out reminders as we get closer to that date. For the regular business meeting then, on the twenty fourth, we will be having a public hearing on ordinance zero zero six, twenty twenty four, traffic safety cameras. That is a public hearing that will take place. Under the consent agenda, we've got the regular accounts payable and the meeting minutes. And then we have potentially under new business, the revenue estimates with Greg Thremer. So if we are prepared for that, they'll bring it forward to council for further discussion about where we're at with revenues looking forward to twenty five and twenty six. And then regular department reports, city administrator report, and then an executive session for potential litigation.
All right. Any questions on the extended agenda from the council? Go ahead, councilmember Walker.
Deborah, thank you for doing such a good job talking at the chamber luncheon today. I wanted to see if we could potentially do the TBD meeting on another week. Would really love to do a P three committee meeting. It's been a while. I don't know if that's, if that's possible, but that would just be my, my preference.
Thank you. Any other thoughts from councilmembers? Did you want to, so we have other P three committee members? Go ahead, councilmember Beaumont.
Is there anything for the agenda for a P three committee meeting, I think is the question.
And I'm not aware of anything at this time, but if there are some items that, for example, the city council is looking to gain additional information on, that might be something we could bring forward, but we would need some direction from council.
Okay, so I agree. It's been a really long time since P three has met, and I think we're all sort of feeling a little strange about that. But if there's nothing on the agenda to bring us, certainly we don't have a reason to meet.
May I recommend that we, you know, we've got a week to the next council meeting. So if P three members have items that you'd like to have brought forward to the agenda, maybe come to the meeting next week with those items, and we can see about scheduling it for some time.
Sounds great.
I think the, the only thing to consider is, is that if we're not going to have a P three meeting, and we do need to have a meeting for the Transportation Benefit District and a public hearing, we do need to notice that. So we do need to give the clerk time to notice the meeting.
The TBD meeting?
The TBD meeting.
I'm not sensing the issue being the TBD meeting. What I'm sensing is that they would like to have a P three meeting.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be on the same night as what I heard. It could be another night.
So you want to reschedule the TBD meeting, is what I'm hearing?
Yes. Oh, no, no, no. My bad. Yes, reschedule the P three meeting.
Okay, got it. Reschedule P three for another night. Have the TBD meeting on the twenty fourth.
And, and it would be great to hear from councilmember Fisher, who is the third member of our committee on this as well.
Okay, great.
So, so let's go ahead and bring that up during your reports next week. Okay. Go ahead, councilmember Fisher.
I felt like I had to say something. Now that she called me out. No, if there's nothing on the agenda, I'm completely okay with it. Move, move forward with TPD and just let us know.
All right, thank you. All right. Anything further on the extended agenda? All right, sing none. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the city administrator report. Administrator Knight?
Thank you. Just a couple of items to bring to the council's attention. One obviously was the tentative Transportation Benefit District Board meeting at six P M on the twenty fourth, and just wanted to confirm that there will be a quorum available for that meeting. Looks like there is. Thank you. At today's chamber meeting, there was an announcement that our representatives from the twelfth legislative district representatives Steele and Gaynor will be speaking at the next chamber meeting. And that is scheduled for Tuesday, October eighth. So if there are councilmembers who are interested in attending, if you could let Liam McCorkle know, and if we get more than four members, then we will notice for a quorum at that meeting. If you're interested, he'll get you signed up for that. Then just an announcement that you recently appointed members to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and we are getting ready to put out a notice, a call for applications for our lodging tax dollars. And the first meeting for the LTAC committee will be held on October tenth, that's just to get them kind of up to speed on what their roles and responsibilities are. And then we'll have a second meeting for that group to review applications and then make provide a list to the city council of projects that they would like to fund. So that'll be coming back forward to the council then in October and in November.
Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
That's correct. Eleven thirty? You're welcome.
Go ahead.
And then the last item was just a grateful community member who sent in a notice through our customer relationship management database, Monroe Listens, just thanking the council and expressing their appreciation for the work that the city did in getting the rectangular rapid flushing beacons in place around the community. So just wanted to share that with the city council and let you know that there's a lot of community members who are very grateful for those.
All right. Any question? Oh, go ahead, councilmember Scarborough. Signs. Okay. Jody? Yeah, and, and just for your information, I don't know what happens with those banners, but I would anticipate that next year you'll have different banners with the right logo on them. And so while you're bringing them back, I acknowledge that it'll be up to the chamber, like what happens with banners that wouldn't otherwise be used. So. All right. Anything further? All right. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the mayor's report. And pretty much everybody has already shared a lot of the stuff, and so does anybody have any questions for me? Oh, I did want to mention, thank you. That's why we have those things on the slide. I've reappointed Alex Keefe to position two on the Civil Service Commission with a term ending on September thirtieth. And I think that's all I have this evening. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right. We do have a need for an executive session this evening for potential litigation, person to R C W forty two point thirty, point one ten, subsection one, subsection little I, for an initial fifteen minutes. We will be, there will be action to follow, if nothing else, to adjourn the meeting. I will announce any extensions that need to occur in this room. Those announcements will be made in this room for anybody left attending and people not left attending. And then will also be announced online when the executive session and potential extensions are complete. Again, we will re, we'll come back into this meeting and then potential action, potential adjournment. So we are now on an executive session beginning at eight oh four for an initial fifteen minutes.
The executive session has been extended eleven minutes. The executive session has been extended ten minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes. The executive session has been extended an additional five minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes. The executive session has been extended an additional five minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes. The executive session has been extended ten minutes.
Out of executive session, we have no further business this evening unless there's an objection. We are adjourned. Sing no objection. We are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody. Thank you.